Monday, October 28, 2013, 6:00 PM. A location by Lou Rosenberg.
My father, we thank you for the updated assembly. We do the public's will. You be your representative for this process. Be with us, guide us, give us wisdom. Give us patience and get us out of here, in Christ's name.
We have established. It made it sound like we were in the infirmary or something.
Is that Protestant?
Can I continue, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have established a court, Councilman Beto, Councilman Miller, Councilman Rodriguez, Councilman Justin, and Councilman Donas. Now, would everyone please stand for the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. On her Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under our one individual. We're going to skip on to item two, A. Review and affirmation modify resolution dated March 28, 2013 concerning management conferences in direction of city attorney concerning contact and use of council including threatening litigation. This item was tabled at the October 24, 2013 meeting, Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, this is basically the item we discussed on Thursday. And it has the revisions we discussed in there. There's a slight modification in the caption to pick up the previous March 28, 2013 meeting. And there is an amendment somewhere in here to talk about. Item three, page two. In order to comply with open meetings at council member staff, like officials, to the time they apply all buttons in replying or forwarding inquiries or responding to any of the kind of things that are walking through them and avoided. We did not discuss that, but that's in keeping with the idea of what we did. I put it in there, you can strike it if you like. Other than that, it encompasses those items we discussed. Item one, I'm not calling attention to the business italicized bottom of page one. On behalf of city staff. Simply to emphasize that I'm supposed to be under the manager's guidance. And the idea is that staff should be working through the manager. And the manager is the person to relate to the council with my assistance is necessary. I take those as a.
And the changes in.
We talked about.
Is there a. Miss Mayor, on this one, it doesn't say CNA. Vote on it? We can vote on it?
No. There's no CNA.
Lou? Lou, did you approve it?
Review and affirmative modify the revision date. Twenty-eight, regarding managing conferences and regular city managers during contact with council. Threat navigation item tabled at October 24, 2013 meeting. And it does say review and affirmatively modify, I think modify means a verb.
Review and affirmation modify. Well, that's, to me, it says that it's like a, to proofread it and not necessarily. Not necessarily a connection.
If you don't feel like affirm is a strong enough word, you want action.
Well, may I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
While we worked on this agenda item, we took it to mean that we had, we were going to vote on it in the following meeting, okay? And so when we talked about the agenda items, we did have it under with CNA on it. Now, someone changed it when we turned it in. Although it was your item, I mean, because you requested it to be on there. And when I called on Friday, they said Lou approved it. He said that.
I did.
That it's okay, that we can still vote on it.
That's my view.
So, is it legal?
Yes.
Okay, then we can, I moved that we vote on it. So I move to. Yes, I move to accept item two, A.
I don't feel comfortable.
Well, it was put on like you said, I don't know who.
Well, 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 what was the way it's supposed to go on or the way it is now?
All the changes were made, so I don't see any difference between what we talked about except for the.
And I'm not arguing what's put in there, it's just, I'm arguing about procedure.
But legal, Mr. Rosenberg. You're saying it's legal, so why can't we vote on it?
The public gets an oath of thirteen, the public gets an oath of an executive, it's an act, right?
So it's legal or.
Okay, have you voted by Councilman Castillo, second by Councilman Donas?
Madam Mayor, before we go on, I have some discussion on this item. And I'm going to reiterate my objection to one, paragraph three, the last sentence that gives the city mayor administrative authority in that it is typical practice in the absence of the city manager to appoint an acting city manager, we have the administration in place. And I find this a violation of the city charter. It clearly states that the mayor shall have no regular administrative duty.
I thought we were going to strike that from our last.
It wasn't, we put it back in.
We put it back in in our last meeting, we talked about this. And Mr. Rosenberg said.
And it was.
Yes, we asked that if we.
Yeah, it was.
So what is the legal on that?
It was asked that if, or in the future, that if there was any, that there not be any type of administrative rights to the mayor.
And this is only in case the city secretary and who else is.
The city manager.
City manager, they're always going to be there, so.
What are the chances?
What are the chances of those two not being there?
All right, let me ask. Okay, what if the city manager says, okay, the city secretary is not going to be here, so I give the mayor the responsibility.
It's inappropriate.
Charter, is it?
Yes.
Well, our council said it was not in our last meeting, so.
No, it was discussed, it wasn't decided in the last meeting.
He said it was on a prime.
It was a prime line.
And what is the charter reading, what is it, Lou, that?
Well, the charter makes clearly that the manager is the person that carries out the council's responsibility. Even the city secretary is questionable, whether he can carry out and who's the manager. But this is simply to provide you some administrative ability to go forward. If the mayor, if the manager's not here and if the city secretary's not here, it's the mayor here.
So, but in a case of emergency, that they're both out here, couldn't we have the council? Who's going to have?
Any member of the council to it.
Not the mayor.
Or an appointee of the city manager.
Or the city manager.
Or a mayor.
Lou, where did you say it said that an elected official? Didn't you say that last time at some place in here, you said there was about an elected official?
I'm sorry about the mayor being.
Elected officials, that they're right. We receive a response from legal to such a big coffee shop and provided. But I know it's about a.
So why, so why can we appoint a city council or any other city and not the mayor?
Because the charter does not.
Okay, but the charter does not say either, but what we're looking for is that, I know you're, they would say we're going through the charter, but it doesn't make no sense to put any other city employee versus a mayor.
Well, what if in the past, did Andy appoint Jesse Evans or Chad Park or some.
In his absence, yes.
At his absence. So in other words, we just want to make sure that what we're doing is right and that we're not, the charter doesn't want us to do.
Well, the charter is silent on this issue, folks. What about no administrative duties, no regular administrative duties? It's not regular, that's the point. It's only in the absence of the other two persons.
What is your true objection, Mr. Miller? I would like to know against having the mayor or any mayor, whether it's her or someone else.
The role of the mayor is defined by the charter and it says.
But this is says in case of an emergency.
Well, and in the case of a declared emergency, the governor, by the governor, the mayor has additional duties. The charter is very clear on that and we shouldn't be bypassing that. If the city manager is going to be absent and knows that the city secretary is going to be absent, he or she will designate an acting city manager so that we don't have these issues. That is their responsibility, is not the responsibility of the council nor the responsibility of the mayor to take that position.
Okay, city manager, in case both of y'all weren't here, who would you recommend to take, to make for this item here? What would you?
Yeah, looking at, I think what you've done before in my predecessor, I would pick the chief of police unless and so that if someone, because it's a legal issue, they saw the papers in reference to that, I recommend the chief of police. And they also avoid the issue of either the mayor or the elected official maybe doing something that may be contrary to the charter, so I recommend the chief of police. I think they used that protocol a long time before.
We have many times.
Is it, I'm going to ask one more time, is it contrary to the charter?
It's not spoken to in the right.
Okay, my point, so, so we can do it.
I understand Mr. Miller's point, I understand the rest of the council's point. It's what you want to do to cover the emergency. And if the manager, let me just say that if the manager sees ahead of time and appoints the chief, then the secretary's not there to do it and the mayor's not there to do it. It's only in the event that the manager doesn't perceive the emergency or the urgency.
Round 33, they're going to be any further than a poke on the way anyways.
Well, so that should answer the matter. Especially in an emergency situation.
Depends on where they are, it could be in a wet zone. Could have come here.
And let me ask you, I mean, why are you asking for the mayor for one reason other than?
It's not necessarily this mayor, but any mayor in the future.
Because of the. Makes an affect any future.
Because of the protocol, and she's always there, I mean, in this particular instance. But the protocol, I mean, you would think that the mayor would have the, take on the responsibility in their absence of the emergency.
Well, if I'm being, if I'm, one of the concerns that I have is it needs to have a protection, a legal protection staff, whether to do that, because in the case of official, they can sue you personally as well as the city as a whole. And I thought that this point was was about this to be sort of legal papers or documents exactly? Or just an emergency example?
No, this really has to do with issues about foreign contact on relying inquiries to and from the city departments.
It just that they said legal services and references to that. So I just think that typically in an emergency, usually it's your fire chief or the police chief. If I was unavailable, the secretary was unavailable, the next person I would say would be the chief of police, and that was to that. I don't know, I mean, the mayor keeps could get out, she's really good, let everybody know what this is. Long call matter of protocol, I would just say that the chief of police would be, he's using there or someone that would be in contact either by phone or something to do that. That would just be my opinion or my recommendation.
Well, if that's the manager's feeling and you're the current manager, let's act on it and adopt it and move on.
And that would just be my recommendation to mayor and city council.
And then I'll go back to, I have a motion in a second and it's typical.
Okay, what would be amended?
What amount of amendment?
It's as presented.
As presented ahead of. So you can either amend the motion or vote it down and then change the document. That's your part of the issue, if you want.
I'm going to amend it.
I think we.
We already have a motion in this section. So what are we, I mean, we're killing it.
We're going to kill it, we're going to put the chief of police in there.
Well, then, does the document have to be rewritten?
Yes.
We can amend the last sentence in the document and approve it as amended.
And really, just for the record, I just think it's something personal against the mayor, whether, you know, you want to use the charter, we use the charter in the ways that we want to use it.
Honestly, I mean, I don't think it is because, I mean, it says the mayor shall conduct city council.
I understand, you're already, you're already stuck with it, but it's, it's personal thing, it ain't.
It has nothing to do with personal.
Why didn't you bring it up last week?
Yeah, we brought it up last week.
No, you didn't bring that up last week.
No, we did.
No, you didn't, we put it back in, or you never once objected.
They told him that it was okay.
Anyway.
If we're following legal counsel, why don't we listen to? Mr. Rosenberg, I mean, we're paying him to give us legal counsel.
I don't think, I don't think the legal, Lou, I don't think you're saying that we can put the mayor there, that we're going against the charter or.
I'm saying you have that option if you want to do it.
To put the mayor in there without getting in any trouble? Okay, I second.
It's an option.
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying that if you want to put a city councilman or you want to put the mayor, it's just for emergency purposes. So it's not that we're going over the charter, it's just, you know, in case. So if you're saying that we won't get in no legal problems putting the mayor, then I keep my motion and with your, with your opinion.
Me and the parameters.
I don't think they would ever come to that to be.
It's never going to come in.
She's going to make the appointment.
And it's just in case, and if she's still here, she's going to say the chief of police is going to pay for it. I mean, it's just to have it here in case of that. She's still going to call us. Yeah, she's going to say the chief of police or whatever.
Sheriff's office, I'm going to be at the bottom of the sign. It's not going to go directly to the.
Way of reads it is.
In case both, you think both are going to be on?
It says the chief of police.
There in a second.
The chief of police shall be appointed by the city manager with the approval of the city council. It says shall be responsible. I mean, it basically has a lot of the city manager.
Why the chief of police is, the hiring and the firing of the chief of police is approved by council? It's a natural piece of things. And the city manager brings up another very, very valid point, that we as individuals can be sued. Okay, and for actions that we take in addition to the city being sued.
You're absolutely right, we can be sued.
And if this is a legal matter that deals with the city, this should be city staff answering the minute, not city councilmen.
I'm going to add the recommendation of the city attorney that is just in case of an emergency.
We have a motion and a second already. Until you answer your question, Mr. Miller, yes, I am in favor. Okay, so I have a motion by Councilman Castillo, second by Councilman Donas. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the resolution with the amendment of striking the last sentence in paragraph three, item one. To the city manager in the absence of the city manager, the city secretary is going to be the next, the acting city manager, so that's defined as that. Whoever the city manager appoints as the acting city manager would be able to do that. Because it says the city manager.
It might be you, no?
I hope not.
Just to make sure. In the absence of the city secretary, the city's mayor shall make the necessary inquiries for legal or the city staff or issues related to required legal services.
Hammer over there.
No, I'm asking him to do it so we can see what he's.
I should tell somebody to go to the mayor's room.
Well, he made the motion.
It's this one here.
Just strike it through so we all see it.
I'm just going by what Lou had said at the end, that she may be.
Okay, she made a recommendation, but that does not put the chief of police, he's going to leave it open.
Mr. Whatever the city manager appoints.
Whoever he appoints, that way he could pick Miller, he could pick you.
No.
Yeah, that's what it's going to be.
No.
In the absence of the city.
We cannot be.
Why don't we put the chief of police in there right now?
Because the city charter clearly states that we as elected officials cannot serve in the role of city manager.
The chief of police has done it, and she said I want to go, why can't his name go on there now? I want to put the name on there now, what, that's what we, we were talking about. By that, doing that, John, by doing that, she's going to say I want to appoint so and so.
Well, if that's, if y'all feel better that way, yeah, we can go ahead and put the chief of police.
Well, we already voted that he's striking that without the striking, if you're going to go.
It's just a motion on the.
Put the motion there for put the chief of police, I'm fine with that.
Okay, then instead of striking, I'll amend my motion, then in lieu of striking that, in lieu of the mayor, it says the chief of police. That's the motion on the floor.
Which I made by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Donas, amended and changed. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstain. All opposed, very opposed. Okay. Now, three, I'm sorry, what was the, three, one?
Four, one.
Oh, one, okay, sorry.
Maybe you can write that neatly and we can sign that tonight.
No, I want to go, I want to give you chicken scratch.
Okay.
Is somebody else that's coming in there and you scratch it out and write it in? Okay. Now we're going to go back to one, a discussion and presentation, chamber of Congress voting. Mr. Turner, where you have the.
Yes, ma'am, we did receive the contract in reference to that. Laura and I split the three minutes on it on Friday, but because of the time constraint, we did not come up, I didn't come up with a recommendation as of yet. We should have some recommendations in reference to that. We're looking at several different options, like what their budget and capacities are. We've spoken briefly, I think this morning with the attorney at our final meeting so that we can look at it, but in order for us to give you something intelligible, we have not had a chance to actually make the recommendation, but we did receive the contract. Actually, the next morning, I made sure everybody had a copy and emailed it sometime a couple of days and I felt we were going to make sure we had that. Did you want to receive a copy as well? The email.
They all want.
Yes, ma'am, yes. It said we wanted to make sure everybody received that contract, but it's pretty detailed and look, they're responsible design. It was educational to my, for myself, and so we're hoping that we can come up with a really good recommendation that is amiable to them, or we want to meet with them well and work it out. So we should have something, and I think the city secretary is prepared to put that on the agenda for next week for consideration and actually if you so direct.
Now, is this an agreement between the city and the chamber or the city and the visitors and tourists?
The city and the chamber.
Okay, because they manage the tourist, is that here?
Yes, ma'am, they're like a subsidiary of them, and so the agreement previously was with the chamber and.
Because I would like to see that and put in there also, maybe chambers slash.
It was my understanding that the visitor and tourist center was a city function, not a chamber function, and that the agreement was with the chamber to operate the visitor and tourist. Am I incorrect in my assumption, Mr. Rosenberg?
I'm not sure that I know if that's a separate entity, I remember.
They keep their records separate.
They keep their records separate.
I think they file something separately, but if that's.
They perform the functions separately, but I'm not aware of them existing separately.
So we need to find out if the contract is truly with the chamber or with the.
Well, it's with the chamber, supposedly with the chamber, they're the active entities. But the question that Mr. Miller's asking is, does the convention and visitor bureau or whatever they exactly call it, be a separate corporate entity? I answered to that, I don't know.
Does any contract even state about the event center, what can do other than this?
So, we'll clear that.
Um, ma'am, if there's anything that we need to add too, that we definitely want to have the language that I heard through the conversations that you all had, the questions that you asked, that maybe overlap in between what is chamber members and that their activities in reference to visitor bureau could be all activity, not just a chamber, we want to make sure that clarification and the.
The other piece I would recommend for incorporating into this, or at least into the discussions, is the four B, the Economic Development Corporation, in that we want to be singing the same tune as the community, be it a chamber of commerce or a visitor or tourist center or the city of Forestville or the Economic Development Corporation. And I think they would have some valid input into this.
Four B, four A.
Four B.
And four B.
Four B.
Well, if you'd like to collaborate with them and have their opinion and input, and what they do now, have to ask for some more time, because there's more entities that we need to meet with and have discussions, but not to actually conclude everything with the chamber.
Bring it back to the.
Okay.
They're, they're $400 away from shutting down, because I think that's all they had in their, in the bank. So is there anything that we need to propose next time to do for them immediately so they can pay some of the bills or even, even though, because we've done this before, we've given them money so they could stay, keep their doors open.
Mr. Bypon said he was good if they, if this was all done by the end of December.
Oh, yes.
That's what he told me at that point on the executive. As long as we're working on it and it happens.
And part of what he's requesting includes the $19,000, like that.
No, it not, he was not, that was, he was explaining that that they, they've been funding the chamber to that tune at this point.
The visitors owe them.
Yes, it's not the city.
I think what he's trying to prove.
The contract was canceled in 2010, so.
I think what he's trying to prove is that they have been subjugating at that, at that amount to this point and that they're, you're right, they're at their best, they're there for him. But he did say that he could make it as Laura stated, to make it December, so we know this is. Because.
And not although we, this belongs in a contract, but what are the activities that they're going to propose to bring heads to beds?
That's.
That seems to be done, and some of it is a little bit, you mentioned in the contract, but we want to have clarification on that, and there's signage and some other activities. There's some other ideas, and one of those two, and I'm on the, on the, on the chamber side, and I said the visitor side about signing pads and things that are definitely signage. So those kind of things we need to iron out and make sure that we have, so that we can actually make sure that we have things as top of the chamber, and then as top of the visitor bureau, and then of course how it partners with the four A, four B.
So a lot of their overhead is for office, I mean, they've got $8,000 for advertising and a couple of functions, activities, but I'm not sure whether that's, you know, the total budget of $50,000 or $48,000, so.
And then because of heads of beds, which you mentioned, there are a lot of rules and regulations that they can and cannot advertise and where they can and can't advertise. And which events they can, which goes back to, I think what the mayor mentioned, like to the community centers, civic centers, that those activities should be heads of bed and some local councils that may simply bring heads of beds. So there are rules and regulations we could follow, which we can actually, we give them clear direction, run it through the board with the attorney and bring you something back which you can discuss and hopefully approve.
Lou, as you look at this, a number of conversations in past years with the Economic Development Corporation were, was that the visitor and tourist center was a function of the city. The building that they occupy was owned or something to the city. So the entity itself and any assets of the city and that kind of thing were, may have been blurred through the years, but I don't know where we sit on that.
The actual ownership of the building?
That was what Jesse Pettis led me to believe, that it was a city-owned building that was provided for the visitor and tourist center that was used by the chamber as their office.
And I understand what the word was, that that building or land had been sold that the visitor, first, it was up to them to find a location to move.
And that's the question.
It's our building, why do they have to find a place to move?
Well, that's the obvious next question in this is.
Who wants to do it? There's been a lot of questions about that when I was actually working as the executive director of the chamber, we did some review and some history finding on that, because that was a big question with the city, whether the city owned it or it was owned by the chamber. It's listed in the tax rolls, or it was listed in the tax rolls under the city of Forestville. But when we went back and found the purchase papers on it, they were actually signed by Jason Tally, who at the time was the chamber president. So it's one of those things that it was listed tax purposely, I guess, to be exempt.
So, it's one of those things that it was listed tax purposely, I guess, to be exempt for all of those years, but the original documents actually show the building was purchased by chamber funds. So, it's never really been sat down and clarified, but those are some of the things that we did find out.
Well, if the location of the building is there, we need to think about the budgetary wise, just going to be the cost to locate a building and, and of course, it's also, will the building be in a shelter, and we're going to locate the foundation for a home. So, as we open this up and look at it seriously, we need to be able to ask this question, and thank you for that. I didn't know, like, the question about the building and ownership, and, and, so we make sure that we can add that to the contract. So it's one neat package, a one for...
We just don't want another billboard.
Well, yeah, because...
If it's ours, we can charge it, ma'am?
Well, what you do, but hopefully we can have, find a home for the building and, and have some land that we can find a home for the building, go to. Ethical board and, and, and get their activities up, because if you can imagine, their station, their location, all their information has, their current address, and the simple cost of changing all your information to go to someone else, this little cost is even definitely permanent home location, and then of course, clear direction for the person.
Any other questions on that? Okay, now we're gonna go on to item two, B, under new business managers' report on activities up to date. Ms. Turner?
Please forgive me, I'm over there typing. I saw the mayor leave, I'm getting to see it on the air, and... We lost that meeting at six, instead of seven, so I thought I was going to do that. I'm gonna try to, um, I will email you this presentation, uh, prior point, um, I want to take these questions, I'm, I'm leaving this to the question, but I'll send it to you Friday in the morning, once I've got the changes, changes, I'm gonna see.
It works for you.
The lights work.
The lights are, the lights are already on.
Okay, so, moving to third day report, on our responsibilities and duties as a city manager, uh, reviewing the ongoing goals and objectives of the city manager. And, we plan for early projects and overview charts. Actually, the, uh, controller, I'm just working on the overview chart, so this is a draft I don't have there in my report, but we're working on that for sure. Uh, the fundamental principles that are key to all of the city park activities are based on, of course, our resiliency plan. Uh, this will be to work on and keep focused on in reference to our finances, it's definitely a resiliency plan. Uh, communications is important, uh, communications from staff to myself, from myself to you, of course, is important. And transparency is to make sure that we have everything that's legal, that we have everything that we need to have, uh, and of course, all others want to be transparent. Responsing to the courses to charter, the points will necessarily move on the employees, except while it was, not enough to charter. Prepare budget only and submit for the council, responsible for administration or adoption. I wasn't part of that process, but Laura and I have been working together to hopefully prepare, submit, uh, I believe we'll be ready when, Laura? It'll be the end for the last just a few years, we'll have that ready by, oh, the auditor, somewhere, they're not going to be coming till January for food work. They can't squeeze it soon. Okay, so sometime in the new calendar year, we'll be able to prepare a complete report on the finances of the preceding year for you.
We'll have most of it done, there'll be some audit entries, but, yes.
I'm going to keep the city council, uh, advisory financial conditions, the future needs of the city to make sure that such recommendations seem desirable. All right, we want to perform such duties and begin to prescribe, this charter may require, and we're her, I think I put her and myself, but the city council is not inconsistent with this charter. We do performance reviews and evaluations of each department, this will be more typical. The city manager will use, review the evaluation standards established by the city council, and I understand we have all those done from last year. City law laws and provisions of this charter and act with the council, subject to enforcement by the manager of the office, uh, subject to the management discretion of supervision, faithfully execute, and prepare and submit a budget plan. We want to update yearly, that covers the budget and requirements of lots of departments, and this plan should include the five-year capital plan program. Um, we want to make sure that what we're talking about tonight is neither the council or the, you know, the statute in reference to that, we want to make sure that we have all the proper people in place and that, uh, are able to allow me to do, uh, what you all have entrusted me to do, to manage a wonderful city, Forestville. Okay, so reviewing the upcoming goal, this is based on the report that I did October twenty-one, twenty-fourteen. Um, I have an opportunity to meet and join the staff, uh, 4A and 4B corporations to discuss the city of Forestville, and putting on those goals and objectives, as per my contract. So we want to evaluate the staff qualifications, I'm going to know the staff, and trying to work on that organizational chart, which is really important. Uh, the timeframe according to my contract is the second quarter, so it's still ongoing, as I've been this first thirty days. I met with staff in regards to qualification duties as we develop a chart, which is a little challenging, because we did find that a fund that was approved and funded, we have that.
This is really no change, this, this less, more recent.
Uh, to see what's, what's actually funded. I'm recommending that the utility park be filled with three part-time employees working twenty hours per week. Uh, one in the water, uh, water utilities in the front, uh, inspection services for code enforcement that I spoke of last week. One of the problems Monica's having is that she doesn't have any money in the field to be able to go out and inspect and to see. So we're saying that two part-time employees will actually give us some field, some eyes in the field, to be able to go out and do inspection services, and the cost is the same, so there's no change in budget. With additional part-time personnel, the front desk will allow for the operation to continue during lunch hour, uh... That would allow us to stay open and operating. Uh, during those hours, I know you've received some complaints, references to people saying that they haven't had... That they haven't had, they come to city hall and it's closed for lunch. And so what we're going to be able to do is open that door, it's a matter of schedule, so we're going to be able to do that. A staff and training, the proper procedures for code enforcement programs, um, and the city needs to be divided into five sections. Uh, the attorney this morning brought me a map that has been recorded of the city's outline, and so what we want to do is provide five sections of zones, and I spoke to the mayor, I think that was your suggestion, to do it based on the parts that we have divided. I know you all are well within across the city in reference to that you don't have worked with. So we want to make sure that we divide the city into what makes sense, into five zones, so that we can focus on one zone at a time as we go forward. Staff and parks will be working inductions for all violations at city parks. We need to be by example, so we're going to go and ask people to clean up, to be able to make sure that everything that we own, and there are quite a few properties that we own, are cleaning, and, and we are cold and hard and... Once we're able to do that, we should be able to go out and do so. An official letter we send out in a water bill informing our city of upcoming code enforcement programs, we want to let people know it's coming, and I just hit it over the head. Uh, we want to use our water bill, and I'll be needing an electric company to ask if we can put something in their mailing to do, that we can inform people of a survey, and I think, ma'am, we talked about that a little bit, a survey that we can do to ask people what's important, if their parks are important, or if they have problems with custody service, what their needs are, so that we can address those needs. And I'm hoping that a survey will allow us to get those kind of inputs, and then we can have a follow-up meeting to talk about the results of the survey. We're going to be working closely with the court system as we prepare for code enforcement. Uh, before I got here, they approved a company to do our collections, and so I've met with them, and they're going to be starting doing some wards and collections for our outstanding fees. And according to the judge, uh, her local municipal increased underneath two years ago, eighty-six percent in one year. It's kind of tapered off, but they still had that major jump. And so, I think you all approved sometime in, over the September, a, a company to come and do our code, to help us with that. She's going to help us with our code enforcement, as we want to work closely with her, uh, preventing departments, uh, to be reviewed, and our permit process is under development, because as we propose, we can ask, our new offices are coming up from a land use point, our current offices are not being enforced, but some are not necessarily basically. The permit process is too long, it needs to be streamlined, and we can attract a lot of our developers. So we're hoping to come up with a permit process that is streamlined, and we won't have any problems with water issues, therefore we don't have to use engineers as much or attorneys as much as we're back in, if we do all the hard and heavy development on it. To have raises and salary adjustments, of course, the performance is part of the thing that's ongoing process as we get ready to do that. It is one that we'll be coming up with objectives in December twenty-thirteen. We want to encourage teamwork across our departments, to recognize members who exceeded teamwork, and I've been working on the intrinsic plan as well as an extrajust plan. I'm planning on doing a press release for the one presentation you have on Thursday, and to be able to bring some, um, employees to you, and for recognition, for some training, because some officers just received some training. Uh, we're having some hubbers, uh, electricians are going to go get some training. So we want to bring them before you, so you can present, and you can see what staff is doing, so you should be seeing that there's some... We're going to be orchestrating, we do staff meetings, are being scheduled to have, there to be more of a work of effective team. It seems like the police department has been taking all of my attention, but as I said before, intrinsically, intrinsic and extrajust rewards, uh, we'll be setting up to do things, typically they have things such as employee of the month. We want to reward, we can have achievements, and have given back above, above the, um, duty, which is important. But city management is one of the requirements, a report, uh, updating the council following the meeting with the city auditor, uh, as they're trying to come up and come up with, you see them sometime in January. Uh, prepare a five-year plan, which includes a bunch of departments, for all departments, coordinated with the 4A and 4B corporations. And, that's really important. Tommy Baker and I have been spending some time together, meeting with different, um, entities on different projects, uh, just getting an understanding of, as I think the city secretary mentioned earlier, some property we belong to, some property they have, and so, uh, we're looking to bring that forward to you, so that we can have that. I visited the Texas National Office, you know, listing of everything that 4A owns, that's in their name, 4B goes in their name, and of course, the city of Forestville, so that we can lay that on, on that multiple map that the attorney brought. So we hope that we can partner more with the direction, and I think I hear it in your conversations, is I believe that councilwoman, uh, Christine, which today, we're going to work with the 4A, 4B as part of the contract, and we're working with the chamber of commerce. We want to make sure everybody has a portion of that, as they talk about their responsibilities and what they want to do. A short-term analysis frame will be paying for the fiscal analysis, uh, presentation to do with revenues, expenditures, growth, planning and zoning, which is really going to be important, uh, waste management services and our road improvements. Working on the work plans, uh, meeting with the city departments and divisions to prepare the annual work plan to focus on strategic planning. Uh, meeting scheduled with current, uh, city webmaster, he's trying to get out into review the website, so we can talk about different ways we can communicate, because as everybody knows, the web is the way to go. Uh, we don't have a city cloud, is that correct? We don't have a city cloud. So we're thinking about having a city cloud so that we can store data chronically, and that we can be able to talk about, having, so we don't have all this wonderful paperwork, to be able to allow you all to have an app there, and we can email you uh, different information if you can have it stored in your file. So that's one of the things to do, to have some things that are trying to... The priority projects, now the land use project, uh, plan, I can't take credit for, um, I know your ZDA has been working very hard on that. I have seen the plan, at least the first draft or recommendation of it. Uh, they have a consultant that they've been working with, and, uh, hopefully it should have, it is a thirty-year plan. Uh, so it has land use, of course, a zoning plan, uh, and the zoning ordinance, and I'm going to be asking to look at a sign ordinance to ask, so that, for example, the belt bouncer keeps putting signs on telephone poles, and somebody takes a garage sale on a street on a stop sign pole, so those kind of things can be addressed in a sign ordinance that should go in conjunction with the zoning ordinance. Our waste, um, water modeling, oh, no, if, I'm sorry, I forgot to reverse. Uh, yeah, so wastewater modeling to be, uh, waste sewer modeling, has to be funded, and of course, the water modeling has not been funded. And so, Andrew's was working on that whole force, once he has now finished with the roaming project. Project, um, so he's been focusing on that, uh, I think, Mr. Rodriguez, you mentioned that he needed staff. I think we want to assign one other person, uh, for him to work on that full-time. He asked for more, but we can't say that, so we're dealing with engine and one other, his selection, if we can talk about working on the sewer modeling project.
Ms. Turner, on, on the, on the signage? I think we tried at, at one time to, to keep individuals from putting signs back on this downtown street, but from what I understand, those poles get on the Phelps, so they're the ones that are, can say, yeah, we made. I think, I'm, I'm, I believe there is a, it's, there is a, yeah, there is.
It's a staple on the, that is utility poles for that are red, but we can address it in, in the sign ordinance in a number of ways, and I, I, being in the sign business, we need to be looking at a sign ordinance. One, it's a revenue source for the city, and we can ensure that we don't have such a variety of signs on our highways, ranging from cardboard signs for some businesses and, and well-lit signs for another, and in a day and age of digital signs, this becomes also a, a traffic concern that Texas doesn't address. So, yeah, I think a sign ordinance is a good thing.
Yeah, sign ordinance will help us have some authority as well as code enforcement, as you said, through this bit of business, and people will put up signs, because they see black water, they'll put up signs on filthy poles, on the street stop signs, on the street signs, or just a reminder, please, uh, so we need to make sure we have the right setback and those kind of things, and not approach on utility companies properly, because technically they're property. Uh, the problem that I can't have, I mean, that I can find, is there's something I haven't found yet. The point's the fact that you can't do it, so I can tell you, not only can you not do it, but I also may be able to do it, because you did do it. So that sign won't just pass, it's not commercial corridor, and we can have one that talks about just one, one, and we have different requirements when we get to what I'm calling the heart of Forestville, which is the downtown area. And a lot of things will probably grandfathered in, because they're existing, we don't want to tend on historical signs. But he's very busy, um, everything from somebody selling RV cars to somebody selling a rental home. Um, I need another thirty, forty-five days for her to have the five-year plan, and I'm looking for your help in reference to that. I think I've been able to come up with some, that I figured forth, but I need your help in reference to doing that. I see code enforcement and inspection services being very important. Permitting again, there's no timeframe that we need to address. You should be able to say within twenty, I'm just getting numbers, within twenty days, you should be able to get a permit. Within forty-five days, you should be able to get a commercial permit period, it was, and if I deliver before time, that's fine, but right now we have none. Uh, a P schedule for permitting is an issue as well, uh, because, for example, we may be charging twenty-five... A P schedule for permitting is an issue as well, because, for example, we may be charging twenty-five dollars per inspection, when access, you have professional services charging us seventy-five dollars for that same inspection, and so we need to talk about that P schedule, what the P council's program. Annexation is how the conversation started with me and the attorney, and I was able to read the wonderful map. We have the events center, which is, I think, our first one, the wonderful events center needs to be within your jurisdiction, it is being ETJ, but we need to have a within city limit, and that's something that we just started, but it just didn't get done, so we want to finish that one, I think that's a more short term, I think about four or five residents. We have one eighty-one, the commercial corridor, there's an opening out, we have to be there, I know that La Cora's property, or the last one that was annexed in, some of Walmart is annexed in, but there's, it jumps in and out, and we need to have contiguous, especially if we are contiguous and touch somebody in any size, we need to address those issues. Infrastructure seems to be an issue there, I know we're running into some large issues, and we need to talk about the infrastructure along the corridor. One eighty-one south has to do with the, one eighty-one south has the Florisville lake project, that I know was presented to you sometime, December twelfth, is that right?
Correct.
September twelfth, the housing project, the attorney has contacted them for follow-up, and I should be meeting with them, so we can talk about them coming, and I believe, someone took one hundred to three hundred homes, so we need to address that. Of course, I went up for water super plant expansion project, which we need to do our modeling for, so that we can determine how we're going to address the issue, and where those numbers to come from. Councilman Mario Maronis, I put this on there for you, to make sure, because the street repair and maintenance is definitely an issue, and when someone came to complain about some streets, you know, the developer was doing something on Railroad Street, and we have a top ten that needs to be addressed, but we need to talk about money and funding, and I believe we have thirty-seven thousand dollars in that, right?
The way that the council, thirteen, fourteen budget, thirty-seven for maintenance, for manager, three hundred thousand, so it was, like, to be determined later.
Yes, so we're going to go back to M and S engineering to talk about...